Morning, good evening, good afternoon. My name is Duncan Berry. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting for the 23th of April, 2024, held in the Griffin Room. It's being held in person, although it's also being broadcast on Channel 18, the Harwich Channel. And if you have any interest in the matters that are on the agenda today, we would urge you to please make sure that you're here in person. And so for any of the, who doesn't already know, according to Master General Law, anyone who wants to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform other meetings, is there anybody who will record? No. So I would like to ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this evening, we have two public hearings and a public meeting. The first public hearing is case PB 2024-11. Row liver, nominee trust David Crosby and Stephen Farnsworth trustees through their agent attorney Matt Zunder seek a site plan review special permit for a mixed-use multifamily and to develop a portion of the property as a self-storage unit pursuant to Harwich zoning bylaws, Sections 325, 55. The property is located at 41 Depot, MAP 36, parcel B1, in the industrial, limited, and residential rural zoning districts. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Zunder. I'm here on behalf of David Crosby, who's the applicant. And this project has kind of a tortured history, getting back to where we are. We were in front of you, believe it or not, last November, last November 28, made an initial presentation, described the project, and then, you know, you continued it till, we had a zoning hearing the next night, and then it kind of went off the rails a little bit at zoning. Not in any substantive way, but mostly procedural ways. And after some back and forth to town council and the entering office picking up the zoning line, the zoning map wasn't correct, and our zoning line was wrong, it had to be redone. We finally worked our way back to you, but with a somewhat of a simplified application because it was town council's opinion that for us to have a multifamily dwelling in the IL district required a zoning variance, which means that we don't need that form of relief from you.
Okay.
So we resubmitted the application through Ms. Flynn to remove the request for that relief. So all we're looking for here is site plan review under 325-55. So this application, and we're continuing the zoning, we're going back to zoning. And I understand that because our stormwater report still has to be reviewed by your expert, that we're not seeking a vote from you tonight.
Okay.
So what I was hoping, not to bear the lead, was a continuance
Right.
to your May 2 meeting. But in the meantime, we'd love to just give you just a very brief explanation of the changes to the project and what it is, so you have a sense that if there's any questions you have, maybe we can address them when we come back.
So before you go with that, we're gonna have everybody here on the second, then?
Yep.
I have put my
That's right.
note into, do the, we go to meeting through select
So you can be here remotely, okay?
Yes, I can.
Just so that, in the event that we have to have a Mullen rule taken by
Ellen and Mary's going to be late.
She's gonna be, so this is, the reason I ask is, is no sense of you giving a presentation, if we're gonna, only three of us can vote on it, we would have to have two other people here. So we'll hear it tonight under the proviso that we have an agreement that you understand what's going on, okay?
Understood. No, and I'm fine with that. I understand, I understand your, I understand the challenges of everybody being available at the same time. So just very, I'll make it very, very brief. This is an application in a split zone. The property is partially in the IL industrial zone and part in the RR zone. What David would like to do is take the existing two-unit building and turn it into a four-unit apartment dwelling. No, no substantive changes to that building at all. It's their interior modifications. And then construction of a, of a 155 by 30 storage building. When we, before you, before, it was actually three storage buildings. There were two buildings, and then one smaller building closer to the rear lot line in the RR district. There was some concern by the butter to south, southwest about that. So what we did, we removed that building that was closer to the lot line, consolidated this building into a single building. And then, as you can see in your site plan, we've provided for a row of Leland Cypress, three-to-four-foot Leland Cypress, on top of a three-to-four-foot berm, which provides really some necessary screening to the property to the south. So those are essentially the only real changes to the project, other than the zoning lot line's been reconfigured, but that doesn't really change, I don't think that changes your review. We've provided a stormwater management report, which I've read, which I do not understand at all. I read through it, trying to address any questions. If you have questions about stormwater, we'll have our engineer address them. But suffice it to say, you know, John O'Reilly has engineered the stormwater drainage system shown on the plan.
What, can I just ask a question, Duncan?
Please.
Is this an acre?
It's 34,890 square feet. So it's about three-quarters of an acre. I'm sorry, about three-quarters of an acre.
We just ran into this before. Three-quarters of an acre, do you need stormwater?
You don't need a stormwater permit, but as part of site plan review, we do recommend that stormwater management and drainage have a proper vetting by a consulting engineer.
It's actually, believe in the regulations, not on the bylaw.
Yeah, we always bat this between select and us, and, yeah, okay.
And also, and look, there's a significant amount of site coverage here and pavement here. So it's, you know, so it's important that we contain that runoff on site. But I really can't talk intelligently past that about stormwater. So, I'm sorry. So the storage building is single-story. It's about 12 feet tall, shallow pitch roof. You know what storage buildings look like. We have in the, in the package plans, although the plans were for the three buildings, but the elevation aspects of the buildings won't change at all, in terms of, in terms of what we're presenting to you. And we have building and floor plans there. We have parking on site, adequate to meet the needs. There are nine spaces on site, eight, eight for the residential use, and one for the employee of the, of the stored business. So we're hoping that, you know, once VHB has looked at your stormwater report, we're in a position where you can approve it. So, and we're hoping we'll come back to you with zoning approval before that as well. Thank you.
And how many units in that, the storage structure?
How many are you gonna have?
It's about 65.
65, yeah.
65, and that makes it feasible for you, you're going to?
It does. It'll, it'll work, it'll work with what, what the size of the structure is.
Okay. I read your packet. This goes back to 1809, huh?
I've been working through this for a long time.
Yeah.
You look much younger than
The building, the building's pretty old. And one of the things David wanted was to maintain the historic aspect of the building, too. And not, not only the architecture, but also the location, not have to move it.
The structure itself is something that, that was the reason I bought the property. I really, you can look it up in JLC even. There's a lot of articles about me on the Cape preserving homes like this. And that was kind of the intent
Great.
from the beginning.
And to get four apartments that are well-needed, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I like the idea. I think there's a big future in this town for multi-use properties. I think this is how we're gonna solve a lot of problems without getting into kind of threshold, density threshold issues. And so, we have a report.
I'm happy to give a presentation
Great, perfect.
That's the board's wish.
All right, great. Matt? Okay, just to get us a little acclimated, this is the town of Harwich, and the property is located where the red dot is, just south of Route 6 and just north of Route 28. And so you can see it right there. And this is along the Harwich-Dennis line almost. And you can tell that the property right here, oh, sorry, my clicker's not working. 481 is right here. So you, so you have the Cranberry Boggs to the south, and additional industrial uses all along Depot Street. And
So you're just south of the McNamara complex, is that?
It's actually across the street.
Across the street, okay, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
So here is, oops, sorry. So this is the site right here.
Yeah.
And there's an existing residential, which is in IL industrial limited zone. And then there's a barn that will be taken, removed and demoed. And the prop, the commercial aspect will be, the commercial self-storage unit will be proposed along here. There is an existing entrance driveway right here, and the, the second egress that's existing is right here, and that will be moved to further up towards this area, just north of where the existing driveway is. And the curb cut is 50 foot on the second driveway on, is the second, the second egress is 50 feet in length for the curb cut, which meets the maximum requirements in Harwich code. And so, just another angle of the property. And so, as we look at the site plan, there is, sorry, there, the proposed residential will be converted, existing residential will be converted to four units, seven bedrooms. The comment, the only comments that we received from other town departments was the Board of Health, the applicant has agreed to replace the septic system with the seven-bedroom system. The parking, it does meet the required parking for the residential. And there are, Ben, and correct me here on the site plan
Yep.
for the commercial, is that three, another three spots, or is that also part of the residential?
It's a little hard to see, but just to the south of the building, there are three spots. Just to the south of the building where the pavement comes in, there are three spots. And then on the north side of the building, there are two in the driveway, one past the driveway, and three just south of the driveway. So we have five spaces on the north side, three spaces immediately to the south. And then if you look way down below the storage building, right down at the bottom of the plan, there's, there's one additional space for the, for the employee of the storage, the storage facility, down near where the, where the concrete pad is for the dumpster.
The clicker, the remote laser's not working. So I'm just gonna, again, the arborid screening is along here as required by Harwich code. The two egress right here, and this is the 50-foot putt for the second egress. There will be a chain link fence around the building, and there is, there will be one employee. The building will be open Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM with one employee and access to the storage units, which will be via a key code. So there'll be limited access to the public. And for the
Just a question. Those don't match. Which, which is the correct one? This one? Okay.
That's an older, that's, that's an older render.
The packet one is older.
That's for some reason, yeah, I noticed that.
This one is correct.
Let me see what you're holding.
This one might be older.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, that one's
That's older, this is correct.
Yeah, that's an older render.
Okay, thank you. That's okay.
No problem.
So for typical site plan review, self-storage for traffic is not general, is not typically considered a high-traffic-volume or generating use. And for project history, the project has been before the zoning Board of Appeals. They are, again, before the board tomorrow night. The project has been ongoing since September 2023. There have been several revisions, the zoning boundary clarification and use variance requirements. So it has been noted that, you know, the mixed-use multifamily uses are granted via a special permit from the planning board. The multifamily housing is not permitted, is not a permitted use in the industrial limited zone. The residential is already a pre-existing non-conforming use. Therefore, the applicant has applied for a use variance through the zoning Board of Appeals. And for the commercial industrial, which is also not allowed in the residential, rural residential zone, that's also would be, the applicant has also applied for a use variance to the zoning Board of Appeals. Therefore, since these uses are not permitted, they can be permitted through the zoning Board of Appeals instead of having to come to, through the planning board. So the application, just for general site plan review, it has met the zoning requirements. There are two egresses for the road access in terms of minimum, it's met the zoning requirements in terms of the minimum lot size, as well as the setbacks that have been evaluated by the zoning Board of Appeals. And the parking layout, they have addressed the parking for the residential use as well as the commercial use. I didn't see an indication of any reserved handicap parking spaces, but I also noted that I didn't see it as a requirement in Harwich code. And they also have reserved a dumpster, which is also required as part of a site plan review. I have already gone over the traffic. And the septic system will also be replaced. For the landscaping and the screening, it is primarily limited to here. And I think there was also additional screening up in this area.
It's already
Hydrangeas.
Yeah, exactly. Along the fence line between, I think Emily Baruti, last time you had mentioned something about the screening. So we, yeah, and so we, we have a proposition of climbing arborides or hydrangeas all along that fence line to separate the two.
That's great. And I think I, in my staff report, I noted arboridie instead of spruce, so that was a mistake in my part. And the lighting plan, the lighting will be foreshaled, downward-facing fixtures, dark, dark sky compliant, which are also required by Harwich code. And my only recommendation for tonight would be to continue the public hearing to May 2, so that we have time for the town's consulting engineer to evaluate the stormwater management and drainage.
And for the zoning to come?
And for the, I'm sorry, and for the zoning Board of Appeals to render a decision.
So we should be able to act on May 2? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So when we come in May 2, let's just do a quick checklist of, that we've ticked those three boxes, and we'll be ready to vote, I would think. This is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, one, one comment, and this is, this was my error, actually. In our narrative, we said the hours would be nine to five. I think when we were, at the zoning, we were talking about a little bit earlier to a little bit later, just because people that have to drop things off and pick them up.
Right.
They have to be outside of office hours. So I think we were thinking seven, eight in the morning until
Seven to seven, or something like that.
Seven to seven, or something like
Seven to eight, something along those lines.
But we're seeking a use variance from the zoning Board of Appeals, so they're gonna be the arbiter of what we're allowed to have. So we'll come back and let you know what they say, and hopefully you'll be okay with the hours that they set.
Well, I would imagine, since you have a neighbor around the corner
Right.
up on Great Western that is gonna have similar hours, you probably, all you have to do is emulate.
Right.
We have to emulate what is a working formula already in that zoning area.
I'll try to find out what that is.
Yeah, there's a depot, there's Depot Street Storage, which is, it's almost across the street. It's right there.
Really?
Yeah, Depot Street Self-Storage, so
Okay. I always think of it on Great Western, kind of like
No, there's another one.
That's another one. Okay, so there we go.
Everybody
It's gonna be pretty much set with what is the functioning hours.
It's right there.
Right.
Literally across the street.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna make you do anything that's
Okay, I'll look what their hours are, yeah.
Harry, sorry.
A couple of questions. Looks like you've got asphalt all around the storage building. Is there going to be vehicle storage on that hard surface anywhere? No? And do tenants of the storage facility have 24-hour access?
No, that's part of the hours. That's part of the agreement.
Okay. I thought you were talking about an office employee being there for those hours. I didn't know if the people that had stuff stored there
No, the keypad will limit the ability to come in to whatever those hours are that we come back to you with.
Yeah, I think, I think there was an office person hours that we had discussed with the zoning board, and then there was gonna be like a nine o'clock keypad shut-off time. And it could, the keypad could work at like 6:00 AM, but there could be an office person seven to seven, and then there could be a couple hours front to back, like you were saying.
We'll set, we'll set the keypad hours for customers to whatever the hours the zoning board determines.
And I'll find out, I'll find out precisely what the hours for both facilities next door are.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? No questions from the public, I assume? Yes.
I was just going to clarify in my staff notes, it was the multifamily in the mixed-use special permit that is granted via the planning board, and that's why neither of those are allowed in those respective zoning districts. And that's why the use variance is required by the zoning Board of Appeals. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zunder. Do I have a motion to continue?
Motion.
We may as well spell it out, too. A motion?
Motion to continue to May 2?
No later than
No later than 6:30 PM?
Have a motion and may have a second?
Second?
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, just one housekeeping matter. On the second, I'm gonna be, I have zoning in Eastham starting at 5:00 PM, so I may ask to be put later in the
Absolutely, impossible.
Just
Just if, let's make sure that we get you a number, so you can TM your progress if the meeting's underway.
And then, do we have to have a quorum of, I mean, to vote, we have to have five
I believe so, yes, for site plan review.
Is it this special use permit?
It's a site plan review.
Site plan review.
So we need five?
Yep.
Someone has to watch this.
We're gonna have one person, one of the other two members watch
This.
this. Yep. So, and that was a grand total of roughly 20 minutes, or something like that. So I think they can digest that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. We'll see you in a second. And our next item is case number PB 2024-09. Administrative Continued Public Hearing from the Planning Board's April 9, 2024 meeting. Sam Speakman of Speakman Excavating has applied for a modification to a definitive subdivision originally approved as PB 2016-2022, excuse me, -22, and modified on December 12, 2023, in order to lengthen the road known as Shelley's Path. Assessors MAP 55, Parcels F1-1, F1-2, F1-3, and F1-4 in the residential low-density RL zoning district. The applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. So we have to, we have to vote on their request to accept the request for withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we vote? We have enough?
I would think that this is not like a super-majority scenario, right?
Are we able to vote?
I believe so, yes.
So are there any questions about this matter? Withdrawal without prejudice is pretty straightforward, so. All right, may I have a motion to withdraw, to accept the withdrawal?
Harry or me, or? Motion to accept the withdrawal. I'm trying, Harry, I'm trying. Do you want the case number, or?
No, we'll, we'll do the informal way tonight. We have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. We now move on to the public meeting part of the evening, which is case number 2024-12. Eastward Companies is requesting a release of Lot 4 from the Turtle Run Agreement in Covenant in exchange for placing 3 in the Covenant. The lots were created as a result of granting a definitive subdivision plan, PB 2022-12, known as the Turtle Run, and are located in the residential rural RR in the Drinking Water Resource Protection DWRP zones, Assessors MAP 63, Parcels C7 and C8. And I'm assuming we have Susan?
Hello, Susan Ledoux from Eastward Companies.
Hi, Susan. Could you just give us a second? We need to take down a presentation that's on the board. It's coming down, just one second, please. There we go. Hi, Susan.
Hi. Thank you for having this on the agenda tonight. I submitted my packet on March 20 to the board, and I'm not sure how many members. I know Duncan, you were on the board when this was approved. The subdivision is a five-lot subdivision, and it was approved in 2022. The planning board released four of the five lots February of last year, because we had some remaining work to do. And so held one lot in the Covenant. And along came a couple who would like to buy Lot 4, which was the lot being held in the Covenant. And so we would like to put Lot 3 back in the Covenant and have the board release Lot 4 tonight. So it's just a simple swap. We would record the Covenant, the new Covenant for 3, and the release for 4 at the registry if the board does grant this request. And just to let you know, I did submit a construction, road construction estimate to the board. All work is complete. We do have the VHB report that we're going, reviewing, and we'll follow up with anything that they had in there, and then the as-built drawings, which are about $6,000. So there's about equivalent of $6,000 or so left remaining. So instead of trying to post a bond and do all of that, we thought, why don't we just swap the lot, and you're still holding a lot for the remaining work?
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Excuse me, Christine, I'm sorry, your insights, the town.
Mr. Chair, I did want to preface that we still haven't, the engineer was, we requested the engineer to evaluate this, so I haven't had responses of yet at this time. And so in terms of procedure, I'm a little bit unfamiliar to advise the board. We did provide the most recent assessment evaluations for the lots. They are fairly consistent with each other in terms of value. But in terms of moving forward, I would defer to the board without a recommendation from staff.
Okay. So I think the, the concerns that I have, that, any concerns that I would have regarding engineering questions would have been resolved several years ago, when this was first discussed. So as far as I'm concerned, this is more of a procedural swap to facilitate, you know, access to the property and transactions, closing it out. So I would, my feeling is we should proceed ahead with it as such.
Just a question.
I think Christine answered my question. I was just wondering, are there appraisals for these two parcels? And, and do we know that they're roughly same value?
Oh, most definitely. Yeah. All the, all the lots are appraised or assessed fairly highly in this subdivision. And they are equivalent in, in value.
My only question. Yeah, and I, because I recall going through that schedule, what year, the earlier this year or last year, I think, something. So, I mean, this is
Last year.
Still fresh, yeah. Anne, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Just a question, of these five lots, how many are built, or?
We have completed a house on Lot 1, which is the first, if you've, if you've gone into the subdivision, it's the first lot on the right. We've, we're, have under construction and under agreement the first house on the left. That's Lot 1. And Lot 2, we just received a building permit for, yesterday, for Lot 2. And so Lot 3 would remain vacant, and then the planning board covenant. And then we have a closing, actually, on Lot 4 scheduled for May 1, with a couple that's buying this lot. So two, two houses, if you go in there, you'll see two houses right now, out of five.
But you're, you're a majority kind of done, to some degree, or under agreement? So this is just a, I agree with you, it's just a swap.
All right, do we have any further discussions here? No?
Do we vote on this one?
Yes, I would recommend voting on it.
So do we have a motion?
It's my job to have a motion?
Yes, it is tonight. You're the designated motion maker.
A motion to accept the swap of, from Lot 4 to Lot 3, is that correct?
For To put Lot 3 back in the Covenant and release Lot 4.
A motion to put Lot 3 back in the Covenant and release Lot 4 in Turtle Run subdivision.
I'll accept that as a motion, may I have a second?
A second, yeah.
Any further questions, comments?
Mike, I'd like to, if I can just quickly, you will be signing the forms tonight, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't think we have any MyLars here, I don't.
No.
No, we won't be signing anything.
No, no Mylar.
And the next meeting is May second.
Oh, yeah, there's no Mylar, it's just a release form and a covenant. I didn't know if you would be signing those tonight when you take the vote.
I don't think we have that paperwork tonight, but we can, we can facilitate, we can get that executed within, you know, a couple days.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay.
Over the next week, I'll ask Shayla to contact board members if they wouldn't mind coming in for a signature.
Yep, no problem. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, no abstentions, no oppositions, it's unanimous, thank you, Susan.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good night.
Yep, you too. That takes us to the, let's see, new business of approval of our draft minutes from the April ninth meeting of the board, which looked good to me when I looked at them.
Yep, that's good to me too. Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Do we need a motion to accept the meeting?
Yes.
Do we need a, okay, I move that we accept the minutes from Tuesday, April ninth, the Harwich Planning Board as is, as written.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, very good. And we have an update from Christine.
Just, we have town meeting coming up, I don't believe we have any zoning articles. So in terms of the board having to do a meeting or post a meeting, I'm not absolutely positive. But I did wanna remind members that we have a meeting on May second, which is a Thursday at six thirty, as well as the viewing audience. That our meeting times have changed, so as not to conflict with annual town meeting.
Great.
And we do not have a meeting on May twenty-first, correct?
Correct.
So, but we do, prior to town meeting, just for the sake of propriety and for the sake of tradition, actually, also, we always open a meeting in the event that there's any question about, you know, consulting or evaluating any issues that may come up before the meeting. So we'd like to, we generally like to open the meeting and then put it into recess immediately that will then expire at the end of the, of the town meeting. So unless we have to like call and end to the recess where we will convene and have our deliberate, but there's really no reason for us to be deliberating about anything. But in the event that it looks as though we're deliberating because we might be sitting near each other, we just have to be careful, so. So.
And is there a posting that's required to open the meeting?
Uh, you know, we probably ought to ask Mary about that because we've been, we've been doing that now for like six years. And it's just a matter of going in, we, we open them up, we declare a time, and then we go into recess, so.
Okay. Is there a specific time?
If there, I would email Mary and say, do we need to post that, just to be double sure? Because we don't intend to have a meeting, but.
To avoid the perception of a.
Correct. Is there any, anything else before the board this evening? I see nothing.
In terms of planning, we are having our hazard mitigation kickoff meeting this week at eleven o'clock here in this room. And for the open space and recreation plan, there is a survey, so if you know of anyone, please encourage them to take the survey and participate and watch the local comprehensive plan upcoming meetings, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. I think that's all we have tonight.
Good.
So.
Seven oh six, I gotta make, I make a motion to close the meeting?
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.